I'd like to follow the Town Council regular meeting, May 16th, 2024, Cape Charles Civic Center's order. A roll call.
Buckholz present.
Holloway present.
Bennett present?
Buda present. Grossman present.
To be known, we've established a quorum. Can we stand for a moment of silence and pledge to allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all. The first item on the agenda is recognition of visitors' presentations and recognitions for National Public Works Week presentation, proclamation, sorry. Proclamation 2024-0516, National Public Works Week, May 19th through 25th, 2024, advanced quality of life for all. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of citizens of the town of Cape Charles. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the town of Cape Charles to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now be it proclaimed that the Cape Charles -- excuse me, Cape Charles Town Council is hereby designate the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024 as National Public Works Week, and urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies to pay tribute to our public works professionals and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. Adopted by the Town Council of Cape Charles on this 16th day of May, 2024.
John?
Do we need to vote on that? Proclamation? No?
Yeah.
We do?
We usually do.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proclamation as stated.
Should I move?
Second. Go ahead, your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please note that Councilman Buckholz did arrive at 6:03.
No.
Oh, sorry.
The other Andy.
Other Andy. I'm not used to the seat. Okay, public comments.
No one signed up to speak, but I do have a few that were submitted via email to read into the record.
Let me get my timer started.
Okay, the first one is from Walter Bronson, 515 Tazwell Avenue. Says, "I'm afraid my attempt to quote numbers and the immediate debate about them from council completely overshadowed the points that I was trying to make at the STR public hearing." There were four. First, while I agree that STRs are not the complete vein of Cape Charles, nor do I believe that they are the complete savior that some would have you believe either. At least one STR owner spoke of driving into town and turning around and leaving before even getting to downtown during their first visit. A visit several years later found things still not great but better, and she decided to repair a house and open it as an STR. So clearly, things were improving prior to STRs coming, as numerous as they are today. I'm not saying the STRs have not helped the recovery of Cape Charles, but there were and are many other factors involved than just STRs. Mr. Buckholz presented one himself. When I tried to explain that the town is overrun with tourists by explaining that some people run down to the beach at the crack of dawn to stake out their spot, Mr. Buckholz blamed that on the nearby campgrounds and day trippers. Are we to believe that the campground and day trippers only come to the beach and don't patronize our businesses, and that STR renters only patronize our businesses but don't use the beach? This leads to the second point I was trying to make. We moved here. STR renters come here, and others visit Cape Charles because it is a quaint little town with a nice beach, numerous restaurants, cute shops, and other amenities. We all know that during the summer season that it can be virtually impossible to get into a restaurant, and all the town amenities are as crowded as the beach. We are getting to the point where we are a tourist trap and not a quaint little town any longer. Eventually, that's going to hurt the tourism industry. We are quickly becoming a victim of our own success. Speaking of success, point number three, one of the officers from Cape Charles Main Street took credit for helping to fill in the shoulder season. I agree the town has many visitors beyond just the 12 weeks of the summer season, that some STR proponents would have you believe is the only time STRs stress the town. STRs and other tourists flock to the town for spring break, the Love Run, Festive Fridays, and other events well beyond the 12-week summer season. Point four, currently STRs are very popular and in high demand. Because of that demand, STRs are very profitable, and STR owners can afford to pay high prices for properties because of the high rents they can charge. It also means higher taxes for those wishing to stay. Because STRs are currently popular, especially in Cape Charles, rents are quite high. The high rents mean that the clientele tends to be affluent families. All pendulums swing back and forth, though. During COVID, STRs saw unprecedented growth. However, more recently, the news has stories of the vacationing public becoming disenchanted with Airbnb and VRBO, and growth is slow, and even some STR proponents have spoken of slowing rentals. What happens when demand reduces and simply increases, which will undoubtedly happen at some point, be it this year, next year, or five years from now. Prices will drop as owners compete to try and stay booked, and then the clientele will change. At the extreme, STR -- Next one is from Susan Berger, 550 Madison Avenue. "I'm the one, I'm the one who recently approached the town employee who was walking around and removing limit STR signs from the easements. I'm not sure why she was instructed to take them, as opposed to leaving the signs in the homeowner's yard, but she was kind enough to let me have the signs so I can give the signs to the homeowners. I would just say that if the easement where some residents actually plant lovely gardens are areas where we cannot put up signs, that should also be the case for signs and flower beds on Mason Avenue. In a variety of ways, the residents who chose to put limit STR signs in their yards have been requested to take them down. Even the mayor posted that on Facebook, stating that it's not welcoming to visitors. In response, someone, I'm not sure exactly who, had the Cape Charles Loves Visitor signs made up. And now there are complaints about how tacky he look, how tacky it looks having all these signs all over town. What the Cape Charles Loves Visitor signs accomplished was first to identify many of the homes that are short-term rentals, and there's a lot of them. It also accomplished setting up a visual of the conflict. Those signs are there because of the limit STR signs. It gives the visual message that folks who have limit STR signs on their properties don't love visitors in Cape Charles. And for some, that may be true, but not for everyone. Limiting STRs means just that. I just wonder how many more people can come to town with their cars and boats, and how many more homes can be STRs without the whole historic district becoming one large motel. An informal group of limit STRs residents reached out to the Vacation Homeowners Group with an invitation to meet and come to some compromises that could be presented to you, the Town Council, as you examine this problem. The vacation homeowners did not want to meet. They said that was what the Town Hall was about. I disagree. While some good ideas were presented at the Town Hall meeting, there was nothing put on the table for you to consider that shows compromise. So now the process about, is about who gets their way instead of about working together. Please consider a pause on issuing any new business licenses for STRs until there is some control over this situation. Please consider hiring a town employee to be in charge of everything related to STRs, and you can keep a registry of owners." Ready for the next one? Last one is from Julie Jones. Excuse me. It says, "My name is Julie Jones. My husband and I live at 538 Monroe Avenue. Thank you for finding the opportunity to speak during the public comments. I have a question for you tonight. Do you see value in having full-time residents in Cape Charles? Just off the top of my head, here are some of the volunteer opportunities for people that benefit the town of Cape Charles. Between the Waters Bike Tour, Building Code, Board of Appeals, Cape Charles Concerts in Central Park, Cape Charles Day and Community Cleanup, Cape Charles Illumination in Central Park, Cape Charles Main Street, Cape Charles Museum, Festive Fridays, Friends of the Cape Charles Library Historic District Review Board, July 4 Parade and Events, Love Fest in Central Park, Love Run, New Roots Youth Garden, Planning Commission, Rescue Squad, Thursdays in the Park Cleanup, Volunteer Fire Company, Wetlands and Coast to Dune Board. Are the volunteers who give so much of their time, energy, and talents to make all of this possible residents of Cape Charles or tourists staying in short-term rentals? Just using our block of Monroe Avenue as an example, almost every time that a neighbor's home sells, it becomes a short-term rental. Are you okay with no limits on short-term rentals in Cape Charles? Given your reluctance to regulate the proliferation of short-term rentals, it would seem that you value the money from tourists and unlimited short-term rentals over full-time residents. More and more short-term rentals equals fewer and fewer residents to fill the volunteer needs of Cape Charles. As you ponder solutions to the problem of short-term rentals in our town, please think about the people who live here and love this little town that they call home. Do full-time residents add value to the town? If so, how are you showing them that they are valued? Thank you so much for your service to the people of Cape Charles."
All right. Next item is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve it, which includes the approval of the agenda format, approval of the minutes, and approval of the March 31st, 2024 financial report.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just a comment. There was a change to the financial report that was laid on the table. So please, where makes a motion that should include the new updated chart.
Yeah, these are the new budget numbers that we had agreed to in February. So that was requested last meeting, and here it is. It's good.
I think that we accept the consent agenda with the addition of the replacement of the new financial statement.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No unfinished business. First item of new business is Cape Charles Volunteer Fire Company Fire Lane designation request. John or Libby, I'm not sure who's going to take this one?
Sure. I think this is fairly straightforward. The fire company came to us and requested that we consider designating a fire lane directly across from the fire station for two reasons. One, to allow maneuvering in and out of the fire station, but also to allow for parking when people are responding to incidents. Normally, it's not a problem, but during a heavy season, especially on the weekend, it could be. So the process has to go through to VDOT. VDOT requires you to pass a resolution, staff agreement, approval. And Ryan, if you have any questions?
So these are the spaces on the south side?
Just on the south side. There's a picture of it in the package.
Can I get a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-0516A.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, I move for adoption of Resolution Number 2024-0516A in support of the request from Cape Charles Volunteer Fire Company for the designation of a fire lane on Mason Avenue, as noticed, and for go reading of the resolution. So roll call vote. Holloway?
Yes.
Grossman?
Yes.
Fulmer?
Yes.
Buda?
Yes.
Buckholz?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay. Item 7B is a request for a handicap parking designation at 218 Washington Avenue.
So I guess I'm going to start off with just a general statement about these requests. We rarely got very many of these before. We're starting to get more and more of them. I have no guidance at the moment from council on how and when to approve these. If a request is made, I bring it forward. It has to go through the process, just like this last one, with a resolution. I don't, I'm not in the business of trying to figure out whether or not the need is there, because in order to, if they're successful and they get this spot, they have to have a handicap permit issued by the state to use it. So if they were not, they would be actually limiting their ability to park in front of their house. So I don't have to get involved in the need. It's just whether or not you're willing to dedicate that spot to handicap parking.
Did they present that to the town?
The who?
The homeowner.
The homeowner. Yeah, the homeowner requested it.
I know, but did they present their state or their handicap for a vehicle? Do we know if they have one?
No.
They said they did.
They said they did. But I guess my point is that if they don't, they're shooting themselves in the foot. Because then they're not going to be able to park in front of their own home. But Councilman Buda brought up a question, brought up a comment that I thought was worth discussing tonight. This particular request is for a resident who's only here half the year. So what this would essentially do is take up a parking spot that's only needed half a year, the whole year. And so I don't, again, I had no guidance from you about these sort of things. I thought it was a good point that Ken raised. I thought it was worth at least mentioning and for you to consider if that's something that matters to you or not.
Well, I would ask, how do you know it's a half a year?
It's because she said right in there that they're here six months out of the year.
Is this, I take it not their permanent residence?
It's a second home, it's a second home that they're here six months out of the year.
Okay.
So I'll open up to you guys to discuss what you think about that.
Should we get a motion first?
Yes, sorry.
Can I get a motion on this?
Just to put it on the floor.
Just so we can put it on the floor.
Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2024-0516B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Sorry.
No, you're right.
Now, Washington has parking on both sides of the street, too.
Do they?
Yep.
Yeah, it's just not used, obviously.
Yeah, it's not used.
And this home has empty lots next to it, which of course could be built on.
It looks like there's a house on either side of it.
The walkway, the sidewalk in front.
There's a picture of it in there.
Yeah, it's one of them.
Yeah, this is the one. They also do not have an alley in the back, are they? They do not, even though they had an issue, I forget which, either the yellow house or the one to the left of it. We're trying to put a fence up, and they crossed over.
This is the one with all the fires on the sidewalk.
It had the lot problem in the back, and they changed where the fence lies. Because someone was trying to park their boat back there.
I guess they can get in and out, but it's not an official alley.
And across, across the street here is just curb, or is there just a curb?
You've got to the west of it, you're going to have that small little development with three or four houses in it, and then you've got the section eight houses.
So there's parking ability across the street?
Yeah, but then you got a little bit down from there, just the east.
I mean, they should be parking at their house rather than on the street, though, in what used to be the Coast Guard house.
It's like right in between the, there's parking across the street.
Yeah, so I would just, let's go the more dramatic. And so I'd say they're only here one month in a year, and we're taking off the street there for them.
Like, do we need a policy that says this is only permitted by full-time residents?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was hoping for. Not just up this one specific application, but to give me some sort of guidance for how to process these in the future. That's what I would love to see.
And I'd agree with that, full-time resident, too.
Do they rent it out for short-term rentals?
I don't know. It doesn't.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I would think not, because that would make it harder, if they couldn't park the customer in front, right? So if that's the case, if you would like to set the policy that I only bring these forward for full-time residents, then you need to vote this down. And I will take that as my new policy, my new direction.
Okay.
And full-time, meaning it's their primary residence.
Yeah.
Primary residence. And one of my other questions was about conveying the ownership. We wouldn't, because they have to have a handicap.
Case in point, the house that, Kim Starbuck, right next to the Catholic Church, had a park, handicap park, she bought that, and that had to be dissolved.
Right. And the disabled bathroom, one right here.
Can you have a discussion? Okay, I move for adoption of Resolution 2024-0516B in support of the request from Kevin Rec for designation of a handicap parking space at 218 Washington Avenue, as noticed, and for go reading of the resolution. Buckholz?
No.
Buda?
No.
Fulmer?
No.
Grossman?
No.
Holloway?
No.
Bennett?
No.
So that's defeated, and we now set policy that--
Right. And if the clerk could make sure he's put in the minutes that the policy going forward is, is it this?
Full-time residents.
A primary residence. This is their primary residence. Yeah.
That's it?
Nope.
Oh, tax rate and fees schedule. Sorry, there's just not a paper.
So this one is to cover an oversight. So a while back, you may recall when we redid the main code, we removed all references to specific fines and fees and taxes within the code, and just said they would be set by council to give us more flexibility. So we stripped all of them out of there, and then we never actually set, had to adopt the schedule. So this is just to give us the, you know, the standing to continue what we're doing. There is no change to anything presented here tonight. There may be things on here that you may consider obsolete, that you may not want to do anymore, or that you might want to update later. We can do that as a separate item. And going forward, we'll bring this forward with the budget every year, just like we do with the planning and zoning fees. But for now, I didn't want to wait for the budget because this was already late. And so I would request that you approve these taxes and fees, which is just a standard, which is just a past practice that we've been doing till now.
So can I get a motion that we approve the proposed tax rate and fee schedule?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed tax rate and fee schedule as presented in the staff report.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, because where's the manufacturer? Is it not in here at all? Normally, we would have it, like, food producer, seafood catcher, it's no cost, spelled out.
It is in the seafood catcher. I just read it because I know.
No, I know that seafood catcher, but what I'm talking about is the manufacturer, i.e. seafood catchers. For a long time, manufacturing had not ensured anything whatsoever.
We pulled these from the past ordinance, so we didn't add or subtract anything.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where it went. I can't remember knocking that off ever. Anyway.
Well, we can bring that forward.
I would say that if we can figure that out, I mean, I think, I know that they collect a lot of retail tax and stuff, and that's why we've seen our retail tax go up 15%. But I mean, since everybody else is paying business license, I really think we should start adding those guys in there. It's just, I mean, not trying to dig or gouge, but just fair share. I just think everybody else is paying it, why are they not? That's just my--
Well, unless and before we take the risk of their presence of the not planning.
Great. Well, it gets you benefit, it's just not as much goes up in the, in the actual--
Yeah, all the sales tax goes. Yeah. I'll look into that and propose something back to you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Yeah, good. Town manager comments?
Okay, not a whole lot. Believe it or not, and I hope I don't jinx myself, we're actually getting close to finishing Peach Street. So the paving is finishing up right now. What's really left to do is the striping. Unfortunately, that's weather dependent. It was supposed to be this week, but the rain we got this week delayed it. They were going to do it Monday, but we're supposed to get a lot of rain this weekend. So that's going to get postponed to probably Tuesday or Wednesday. And then the contractor part will be done. The town part will finish. The light poles have arrived, so we'll get those installed. The only thing I wanted to notice, in case you hear something that's next week, the stripe, when they prepare for the striping, the barricades are going to go up on Monday so people don't park. And they're going to go further than the current construction site. They're going to go on the north side of Mason from Peach all the way down to Bailey's. Because they have to re-stripe because of the handicap parking that's being put in there. So if you hear anybody saying something, but why is that all blocked off on Monday? That's why. It's for the striping that's going to happen on Tuesday or Wednesday. Okay?
So we have, can you give something to Main Street so that they can communicate that option?
Yep. Okay. We are pleased to announce we have two hires. We have Nathan Ruff, who started in Public Works, and Olivia Coleman, who started at the library. Both very good hires, so. And we're still recruiting for the enforcement and planning zoning position. We had, actually, Katie and Jody interviewed three people already on it, so we're--
Oh, good. So you got some candidates?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So Nathan, the tall, skinny guy? Hey, he's a good kid.
Yeah. We have made the final arrangements to transfer the money needed to pay off the last of our bonded debt, which will happen next week. So by the end of next week, we will be debt-free.
Party.
And then--
On Peach Street, once it's open.
And then we have scheduled the STR work session for the 13th of June. So that's what we're planning for that. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Andy?
Uh, no, it's been a busy week, rain or shine.
Two things. One, first, John, a question. I noticed that on Strawberry Street today, we had a truck where people were selling rugs out of the back of the truck. They were spread out all over the sidewalk. Are we, do we give like peddler's license for these things?
They're supposed to have it, yeah.
I saw Dave Burn.
I think it was Dave Burn's friend or something that was in Boston on Facebook.
Yeah. But my understanding, when I read it on Facebook, is that it would be with his store.
Yeah, that's what he said. He said at the Betis building.
No.
Yeah, it was going on as I go through this meeting.
I couldn't get out the door, because the rugs were all, and people standing there looking at it. So just, second, I want to give a big thank you to Lemon Tree and the Palace Theater for really stepping up and increasing opportunities, entertainment in town. You know, I think this year, with concerts that they've done and more plays, it has really made things much better for the off-season for local folks, and they've done a great job with that. So I want to recognize them for that.
Did anybody go to the Arsenal Land on Saturday?
I couldn't see, I couldn't get in.
It was really good.
I'll bet.
It was very interesting.
I heard two things from the state level on our bills that we've been following. So both bills have been signed now. House Bill 1461 had to do with allowing localities to limit sub-leasees to do short-term rentals with the homeowners concurrents, but they can only do one. Okay, so that is now signed through the system. The other one--
She's going to tell me again.
All right, so--
I don't remember if you explained it before, but I--
Okay, so a long-term, let's say I could come in and rent a house long-term. I, with the owner's concurrents, can rent it out as a short-term rental. So the concern was, oh, you'd get the realtors coming in and renting many houses and turning them into short-term rentals and manage them for the owners who will agree. But now, they slipped in at the end, the one limitation, one limitation.
Okay.
And they can only do one per year?
There's no yearly thing. It's just whatever the relationship is for that contract, you can only, yeah, you can only do one of that type.
Yeah, because that's what they do.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
Maybe you sit for a year and then--
So we'll see how it works. Let me tell you, there's going to be games, but that's what it says right now. The other one was the Senate Bill 544. The governor had comments on it, and the House and Senate had to go back, and they all did it in one day. But that one was approved, and that says after December 31st, 2023, anybody putting an ordinance in place cannot require a conditional use permit for a short-term rental on a home being-- being used as a short-term rental if it's a, a primary residence.
Oh. If it's a primary residence, I missed that.
Yeah, so primary residence. So again, I, I say there's the loophole of I, I'm there six months in a day and that's my primary residence, I file taxes, and the other time I'm renting it out.
Right, but I mean, that would, that's a, I mean, it's interesting in that most of the people who claim as, as our primary residence, but, you know, they vote that this is where they vote and they're committed in a different way, they may not be here all of that, but that's.
So if we were to implement the conditional rules, we, we haven't talked about that through the subcommittee, basically said no. But that's what this ruling says relative to, to that. The only other thing I have is ADUs. They postponed two bills. If you remember, they were trying to have ADUs by right with state-level criteria established. Or allowances for localities to control, for instance, they move things around and localities can control parking. You know, so there was jockeying around with the state criteria and they could never come to an agreement, so they tabled it.
Did, did short-term rentals or company ADUs?
Well, okay, that's where I'm going. The Virginia Housing Commission is the one that's supposed to help resolve this. So a number of bills went to the Virginia Housing Commission, they set up a, a bunch of subcommittees. And I was checking, because I know, um, May 20th, there's a meeting on a number of the subcommittees, and I looked at the ADU and lo and behold, Paul Grossman is on that committee. No prior notification, although I had a volunteer, you know, like three months ago.
He sent you any notes?
Perhaps, perhaps, but in any case.
Bring him into the poll.
The concern I have with ADUs, again, they're trying to press across the street by right and, and, and establish state criteria, and it basically says any, localities cannot have any other ordinances other than what's shown below.
Yeah.
So that's my fear is the short-term rental aspect that we impose.
Right. Right, because that's how we got ours moving forward is to have that.
Just keep in mind, when you go there, make sure that it's vice versa, like, no homeowners moving to the ADUs, but include short-term rentals back out. Yeah, they're capped. The whole purpose of us joining the ADUs in the beginning was to encourage long-term rentals for affordable housing.
No, I understand. I have all, all that I bring to the table. Let me tell you, just looking at the 30 people that are assigned to this, half of them are realtors and what have you, and, you know, localities are there, but it's the Virginia Beaches versus, you know, the Cape Charles type.
They don't have a Paul Grossman. We are well-represented.
So that's, yeah, that's, I may invite Katie to go up on Monday, too, then.
Oh, good.
That's all I have.
Okay, Andrew? So I had a couple of minor ones. One of them was with regard to striping. I may have asked this before, but I don't remember if there was an answer. But there is no striping in front of Busky Cider, and there could be four or five additional parking spaces there if there was striping there.
And can I add to that?
Yeah.
I've had on my little to-do list to email John and I keep forgetting.
I mean, it was once a garage or something, so they've got a curb cut, which I don't know if that qualifies for not putting parking there, but it's obviously not a garage anymore.
Same thing happens in front of Calix, because that used to be the entrance way as well as in front of 76 West, I think.
I love it.
Because those were like just entrances to Meatland and all that other stuff, the other buildings that were. And we've now were designated those.
I, I, I looked into that at one point and then I didn't hear back from VDOT and then I dropped. Yeah, I'll, I'll look into both of those.
Um, yeah, I want to, the sign at Route 13, which we finally did get painted over, but the paint's wearing off, so the sign's starting to show truth. I'd like to challenge Main Street to come up with some kind of a permanent sign for that.
So they just submitted a, um, a grant, grant to the county and got it. I don't know if they know that yet, but they did get it, um, for a plan for the whole entrance corridor kind of coming in, and that sign is a part of that phase. So I know I've said that to you a lot of time.
In my lifetime?
I know I've said that to you a lot of time, but the, the phase to get that done is.
In the meantime, we will get it repainted.
Yeah, repainted, we can make happen.
Going back to the spots on Mason, that's also created some confusion of commercial tenants either assuming or, in case being misled by a landlord, that those are loading zones.
Right.
But loading zones need to be marked, striped.
Yes, but I would say it creates confusion, so it would be best if we could get that regular striding.
The other thing that I want to bring up is, uh, I was in La R today and Cody and Gerald came by to read water meters, and those two guys are as happy as I've ever seen them. They are so excited about their new jobs, their new positions, all the new equipment they've got, all the new methods that they're learning, the education that they're getting. It was fantastic, so.
I, I can't believe Gerald's actually using phones and iPads.
Gerald, Gerald said he'd never, he said, "I took courses in this," he said, "I've